We got the three on total.
Oh, he gets the first, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you got the different color dot.
After it starts running, they start to put their color. Mine. It's a straight on them. Oh.
All right. We'll see.
Six months will call a meeting in order.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
You may have the roll.
I guess.
Then we move on to approval of. Motionless second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close during non-passes. Next, all items under consent again will be passed with one motion unless someone has something they would like to move. Discussing. Motion to consent.
Second.
No second. There any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close during non-passes. I don't know before. Through the taxation hearing, need a motion to close the regular meeting and open taxation hearing.
May a motion to close the regular meeting and open that. Twenty twenty-one to taxation public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close during non-passes. At this point, I will. Turn it over to you, Christina. For a presentation and report.
For those of you that are here in the public, there are copies of the truth and taxation public. Presentation on the desk when you signed in. Um, I'll go through the report that I presented to the council in your packet. Um, at which point afterwards. I will take questions in regards to the packet. Um, either the council or other. Sorry, I should've spent that out. Okay, great. Uh, the purpose of the truth and taxation is to discuss the proposed property tax levy for the taxable payable year two thousand twenty-two. And the proposed budget for the year twenty-two, twenty-two. This public hearing is held to discuss. And seek public comment on the city's twenty-one general fund budget. And the twenty-two property tax levy. The city of Lacte must certify its final payable twenty-two. Property tax levy to the county auditor no later than December twenty-eighth of this year. The following pages document. These items, the city of Black Duck's twenty-two levies. Uh, LGA payment from the state of Minnesota that was certified in July. Tax base for the city. And the general fund expenditures and revenue sources for twenty-two. The general. Fund budget for twenty-two does not balance. It will need to increase in the property tax levy. However, after counsel consideration review. Of the FAQs from the United States Treasury, it has been determined that the twenty-one. American Rescue Act funds awarded to the city of Black Duck may be eligible. To utilize, may be eligible to rehire police officers to pre-pandemic levels. Therefore, the city of Black Duck will budget fifteen thousand of the American Rescue Act funds. Received in twenty-one to the twenty-two police department budget. And allowable four thousand dollars for administrative expenses to the administrative budget. This will reduce the preliminary levy that was adopted in September. Uh, to three hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. From the proposed three hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixty. This. Um, shows a. Change. Over two thousand twenty-one of a ten percent increase versus. It was a seventeen point eight percent increase before the American Rescue Act funds were allocated. Um, obviously, this doesn't always. Um, allow a ten percent increase to all taxpayers. We have several non-taxable. Uh, properties inside the city between nonprofits like churches, our government buildings, and our school district. Properties. Page two of my document. Reviews the calculation for LGA that we get from the state. I've noted items one through eleven that are utilized by the state for calculation. In red that may or may not have changed over two thousand twenty and nineteen since the census. Near the bottom of the page, you can see that the state has allocated an additional five thousand two hundred and three dollars. To our LGA payment. Um, just under a two percent increase over this year. Will be receiving two hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seven, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars in two thousand twenty-two. Page three outlines the estimated market value history of the city. You can see in the center of the page. The page twenty-two percent over two thousand twenty has actually increased almost two point three percent. So we have a slow increase of market value continuing to increase inside the municipality. Page four outlines the taxable market value of the city. That too has had an increase. Um, typically, your taxable market values based in your net tax capacity is based on two years prior. A lot of what accounts for this is any growth inside the city, improvements to structures. We didn't have a ton of increased property values in two thousand twenty due to the pandemic. A lot of people didn't put. A lot of new buildings up, but they did utilize a lot of their care fund, their care spendings to improve their own. Structures. So there was a considerable amount. Um, you can see, as I stated earlier, over two thousand twenty-one, that's a five percent increase for the whole city. Near the bottom of page four, um, I noted, you know. Same type of comment I make when it comes to property taxes. Everybody varies from year to year. Uh, this, this city uses the county assessor's office to evaluate the taxable market values. Um, each year in April, there's an open house that's held here for the city of Lacte and also Heinstownship. And the assessor's office from the county has representatives that attend that. No, um, appointments are necessary. You can come in with your tax statement and ask. Questions to the assessor's office at that time, um, how your valuation changed and why. And they can help you figure out if there's any mistakes as well. Uh, page five, I've summarized the general fund expenditures for two thousand twenty-two. Noting public safety and which in corporate fire and police. Uh, going to be three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. That's forty-three percent of our general fund budget. General government administration is two hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and forty-one. That represents twenty-six percent of our budget. The streets department, hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one. Which represents twenty-two percent of the general fund budget. And then the smaller departments, parks, um, represents the wayside park. Here in town that lit up this past Saturday. Our library in Karakichigami Regional, and then our street lighting. Page six of the report. Reviews where the funding is going. As you can see, personnel costs, wages and liabilities and healthcare make up. You know, fifty-one percent of our budget. Between operating and equipment that makes up the other. Forty-nine percent. Near the bottom of this page, I've outlined the increase in expenses, uh, fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Thirty-eight thousand, little over thirty-eight thousand makes up the personnel costs. Additional items that we have agreed to fund next year. Is to do some major improvements to the library. Uh, the first one, meaning the LED lighting, it's going to get improved in that building. The Wayside Rest Park is going to fund some improvements to the restrooms with new fixtures. Two thousand twenty-two is our inspection, our city rental inspections run. We do them every two years. And then I noted again down at the bottom that we'll be taking some of our American Rescue Act funding. And offsetting the tax levy for use that because it's allowable. Uh, page seven. I've noted some items that the city is going to be taking action on in two thousand twenty-two that they've been working on this year and last year. The downtown redevelopment project on Main Street. Investments by the city of Lacta, the development corporation. Are going to see improvements to commercial property downtown on Main Street. Where three commercial buildings will be demolished and returned for future development this summer of two thousand twenty-two. This investment will allow for a clean point twenty-one acres of space. Which is, has an estimated land value of twelve thousand, six hundred dollars to, to house new commercial opportunities. For those of you that haven't followed. The article in the paper that represents the three commercial properties between City Hall and the theater. Construction of the Public Works and Police Facility. The city council will consider in January of two thousand twenty-two to move forward with the construction of a new public works and police facility after bidding closes. If approved, this facility will house the equipment and staff of both departments. And will be located west of the city on Industrial Drive. Expenses for the construction bond will be funded partially by property taxes and utility revenues. The property taxes will not increase to the property owners for this new debt as current debt sunsets in two thousand twenty-four. That will take up seventy percent. Existing property utilized for departments will be sold and then returned to the tax roll. That has right now an estimated market value, commercial property of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Newly remodeled and expanded Black Duck Liquor Store. As most folks have known in town, the addition and the remodel to the pond. Will provide for a larger sales volume for business. Providing the city of Black Duck the opportunity to reduce future property taxes to taxpayers. Currently, the liquor store transfers net revenues to the general fund sixty-five thousand dollars annually. The golf course fund ten thousand dollars in late, and our Lakeview Cemetery of two thousand five hundred dollars. This amount may increase in the coming years based on net revenues from the liquor store as the off sale grows. Black Duck Golf Course and Pine Tree Park. City of Black Duck has made major improvements in the past few years on recreational amenities it provides to the community. Improving equipment for the golf course by investing in new golf carts, constructing a new cart shed, and irrigation system improvements have just been a few. The local campground Pine Tree Park continues to add and improve on amenities as the need for camping continues to grow. In two thousand twenty, Black Duck Beach was opened to the public and a new restroom facility was added in two thousand twenty-one. All from the support of the community through donations. Pine Tree Park made exterior improvements to the restroom and shower building and finished the interior improvements this fall. Through the support of camping revenue and the annual Beltrani County round. So what's next? Black Duck is going to be working. On a new marketing campaign. They'll partner with the Chamber of Commerce. And the Development Corps and the school district to fund and launch a new marketing campaign to promote the community. The marketing campaign will focus on what the area has to offer, new people to locate to the area, and businesses to build and offer services to community. This campaign will offer a newly improved website, social media, and radio advertising. A limited DMV. The city of Black Duck has petitioned the Minnesota Department of Public Safety to provide the services of a limited DMV inside Black Duck City Hall. If approved, the staff will provide to the community and surrounding residents and visitors the ability to title transfers. Motor vehicles and the benefit purchasing motor vehicle tabs. This service will generate revenue to the general fund and serve a large regional area. The city will receive formal notification early in two thousand twenty-two. The city of Black Duck Sales Tax. In two thousand twenty-two, the voters of the city of Black Duck will have the opportunity. To vote on passing a half percent city sales tax. Revenue the sales tax will generate will go directly to improving city streets, utility lines. Walking path, parks, and much more. So please watch more in the future. Uh, it will hopefully show up on the referent, as a reference in the fall twenty-two election. Pages eight through. Twelve outline the details of the general fund expenditures by department. I can go through those if people have individual questions. But I'd like to forward everybody to page thirteen, which outlines the general fund revenue sources. I've outlined. The major revenue and resources. Um, with LGA almost being the top at two hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven. The property taxes at two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that's a type following. This should be two hundred and fifty-six thousand. My apologies. We go through a fourteen-page document a bunch of times and you can still miss them. Um, our fire protection contribution, which comes from, um, the eleven areas that our fire department support. Uh, comes in at eighty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Our liquor store transfer that's budgeted for sixty-five thousand dollars for next year. The police and state fire aids of thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. And then miscellaneous charges for services and fines and forfeits pick up the rest. Last page of the document outlines those I just stated earlier, but in more detail. That includes my report. Now. If there are specific questions to the report, I will do my best to fill them.
I got a question. I hear it says property tax of ten point three percent. My tax is one twenty-one percent.
That's your total tax or your city tax?
Fifty-one percent. That's two thousand nineteen to now, one hundred and sixty-seven percent.
And your question is?
Why is it say ten point three?
That's over last year. That's a general percentage of what the property taxes, of what the levy is over this year. That's just a calculation based on that.
How do they pick out who gets to pay the most?
Like I stated on that other page, that's based on your market value and your estimated market value. And the assessor's office can outline that in detail for you. I can't report in detail for each property as to which is going to go up. And how that's going to go up.
My house is valued at ninety-five thousand. According to this, a hundred thousand dollar house, seven hundred bucks. I'm paying over four hundred bucks. I'm saying four hundred bucks. Online price of a dollar.
And that's just a general estimate. I can't speak specific to your property. I'm sorry. If that is your question, why your property taxes went up to that extent that I can't. I am not the, I'm not the assessor of ours. I can't answer that specific question. All I can do is report on what the budget is. And how it all comes into play with the entire budget.
So, come, go home.
Taxes you get to do about twenty percent a year from now on?
Well, we didn't increase the levy last year.
My tax is going to double digits last year.
Again, the levy went up point eight percent over the year before. How it affects your individual property taxes. Is a different calculation.
So can you explain the city of Black Duck calculation and where does that come from? Is that the assessor that comes up?
It is. Yes, ma'am. What I can report to the public is where the budget is. What the percentage calculation is over the existing year. And that's what I've reported in this, on this particular page. But everybody's valuations are different. And that's where the assessor's office comes into play to really be able to answer like Chris's question. Well, ten percent is obviously not in Chris's favor. It's twenty-some percent. So a lot of. I'm very sorry. A lot of what else comes into play, Chris, is. They take into your market values and how many houses in your area have sold. So when your property values go up and down, that's due in part, partially by what properties. Are in your area and what they've sold for.
Well, I understand that. A hundred thousand more out, a hundred thousand more out.
Right, right. And it's like I said, it's just an estimate. That's a calculation I received from the assessor's office for a guide.
So for, for on our proposed property tax statement for next year, they showed a meeting today. At six fifteen to talk about Black Duck. Wouldn't it have been helpful to have the assessor here to maybe explain what that?
You may not have showed up in time, but I had already gone over that each year. The, um, assessor's office from the county, because they work, they work on behalf of many townships, including our small cities. As the assessor's department. And each April, they have open houses. At various locations throughout the county. Ours is typically live up the third Monday in April, and it's posted publicly. For residents and property owners to come in and meet with the assessing staff. With your property tax statement to find out those detailed questions that you have. Again, because each property value is slightly different. Does that help?
That's here, Chris, ma'am?
Yes, it's always here. Yes, ma'am.
Basically, I could stop somebody's town.
They may not even know you personally, so I doubt that. I, I know that there's been several homes in town in the last year and a half that has to. And I, I understand that that generates a big change for a lot of market values. I live in Heinstownship. And mine changed enormously too.
But the value of my house didn't change then.
Did your homestead exclusion go down?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, that's good. That's good. Because target taxable market value and estimated market value are obviously two things. What somebody believes your household self for versus what it truly is, is, is valued at. Truly generates those differences. But all of the, um, percentages of what you end up paying are based on a calculation the assessor can go through with you on. They have, um. To your point of getting somebody angry at you. It's a calculation that they have to go through specific training at the state in order to make sure that that valuation is, um, abides by the statute.
Christina, do you know? How often an assessor goes through? And any of you look at specific homes in an area?
I can't speak to the exact time next, but I do know that Beltrani County. Uh, has reviewed several of the townships in the county in the last three years. Heinstownship was done two years ago, and I believe the city was done around the same time, probably nineteen, maybe late eighteen. But it takes them enormous amount of time to go through each. Specific area because they have to go to each property, evaluate where the properties are. They have to look around. They can't go in your home, but they can. See from the outside if you made any improvements that they don't know about. Um, if you catch them, they might ask you if they, you're, they let them in your home, what to do if you want to. But on a timing standpoint, I think they've done quite a, quite a number of townships in the last five years.
I think a lot of it goes on what you say. A lot of it goes on what houses sold or, but it only works on the upside. The house was selling, worth raised. They don't lower it.
No. No, it's unfortunate.
No, they don't.
Yeah.
Really, yeah. And last year, we did try to keep everything as low as we could with the COVID pandemic and everything else. And we. So point eight percent was.
Twenty-eight percent over nineteen. And that's not your specific increase, Chris. But that percentage that I report is just where the general fund's budget is, the total levy over the year prior. So what I report is a percentage of increase doesn't, that doesn't reflect on your tax. Again, because of market values.
I still think towns matter.
Does anyone have any other questions about the additional items I've reported on, objects that are going on?
Where are the debt service on that? Add this one to the liquor store.
The debt service on the liquor store will not be funded by the general, by the general fund, nor the taxes.
Is that right?
It's going to be funding its own debt. One of the reasons the council agreed to move forward with the project.
How much more did it cost to build a liquor store this year than it would have next year when prices come down? Well, they are, yeah.
Yeah, that's. Difficult to know. We had a, we had a budget for what we knew. The liquor store could be, you know, could cash flow on that debt and the estimates for those bids came below that. So. That's why the project moved forward. Plus the.
You buy a order, like ten bucks a piece, not around three, so.
Hopefully, the liquor store can earn revenue today.
Yes, it is. It is. And.
That's what we hope.
Every night when I drive by, it's full.
Yeah. And, um, Sean and I actually went, you know, and we met, um, prior to the project even working, we're going forward. And she can speak to this more in detail, but when other municipalities. Improve on their off sales, um, it really does cash flow for the cities themselves. Um, the Minnesota State Auditor reports on liquor store financials. The two thousand twenty report just came out a month ago. And there's several, several places in San Francisco that contribute thousands and thousands of dollars to them. Um, the, we hope and, and expectation is that the growth of the slipper store will. You know, continue to increase so those transfers can continue to happen lower the levy for the taxpayers.
Is that on show of revenue report?
I can't hear you.
They share the revenue report at their meetings here?
Their revenue report? Yes, their written statements are always. Their revenue report? Yes, their income statements are always in our council packets every month.
Is that only they see or do?
Nope, all public.
How much higher was the revenue during COVID than normally is?
Please, Shonda. Um, our off sale. Revenue was up about thirteen percent when everything was closed down. Um, this year, our, of course, our on sale is a lot higher than twenty twenty because we haven't been shut down.
I said during COVID, the liquor sales was getting unsettled up forty percent.
Yeah, then that might be true, um, but during COVID, they were, people were not. Um, encouraged to, to travel. And as we all know that this uh, Blacktop area is where people come through to go ice fishing. They come to go camping. They come to go. Um, yeah, hunting, all those items. And then in twenty twenty, they were really discouraged to, you know, encouraged to stay home, stay. In their area.
Respective areas, which we all know didn't happen.
Well, I mean, there was still significant less traffic up there than there would have been.
So the revenue report isn't a package, right?
Yes, it's.
How do I see that?
It's in the income statements. Um, if you want to go in that big package, yeah, it would be in the big package, Christine. I typically don't print this many of those, but it's on our website. Yep. When it's two hundred and seventy-five.
I can see this on the website?
Yes, yep. All public knowledge. Any other directed questions for the truth and taxation report that I may feel?
At this point then, if there's no further questions. I would ask for motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Make a motion to close the twenty twenty-one two taxation meeting.
Regular meeting.
Regular council meeting.
Go ahead, second.
My second.
Motion of the second. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Fine.
I opposed, we none passes. We'll pick up the left off Blacktop formers. Reports of committees, um, we'll get some public works, Mike, so you can. Get some sleep.
I don't really have a whole lot for you guys, so.
Supposed to be between the forties next week.
Believe it when I see it at this point here. Anything for me from any of you?
Guys did a good job this weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that. We're not, I really don't. I've anything, our stuff has just been getting everything ready for what just came. That's what we can focus on. And we'll move to.
I don't have a whole lot to. We're gonna have a little ribbon cutting ceremony um, on the sixteenth, just. Reopening, um, we have been serving a lot of burgers and. Lot of beer.
December fifteenth or sixteenth? Oh, it's the fifteenth. It's the same. It's the Wednesday uh, right after the table. So. Yeah.
How much do I gotta drink to warm my back?
I don't know.
Our, our partners like Ross Anderson are, are doing a, gonna do a presentation and. Uh, we invite the council and staff and public to come. They're actually. They're bringing the media. Because it's a, you know, it's a big project for them to miss a lot of time in their staff. Hope the staff can do it, so we welcome everybody to come. Uh, the fifteenth, next Wednesday.
Is there a, like a customer appreciation gathering plan for?
December?
Sorry, December, the grand opening?
Well, we, we had some things going on this last weekend, uh, grand opening. We did it on the weekend because we wanted everybody to come. Uh, as far as our customers wise goes, we did those, you know, wine tasting. We had karaoke, we had things going on this weekend. Um, and then this had come up and we were just, they were like, we'd like to do a. A big splash, yeah, we have a presentation thing.
You said you did carioles?
Yeah.
This weekend or what?
This last week. It wasn't, you know. TV rated singing, but people really enjoyed it.
Okay. So that means. We could compete, alright.
Absolutely. You mean there was prizes? Only wants to compete.
You, you don't want that.
Okay.
So are you gonna have anything on my stage when you have the?
Really, not really, just, it's just a, you know, here you are, we're open.
Uh, anything else for Shonda?
Burgers are awesome.
Uh, do we have anything from Rob? Our police interim police chief?
The law enforcement on interview panel interviewed five candidates Thursday prior to Christmas for Thanksgiving, excuse me. Um, and we are back running to the top two candidates right now. So I, I hope if the investigator is not too overwhelmed, because he also works for Beltran County. Member of uh, law enforcement. By January, have that narrowed down for the council. We have a part-time officer up on Chris. But the, the plan is to be restaffed.
Anything from the third department?
Uh, no, I apologize.
And all scores?
Uh, the Gulf Board just recently met and interviewed two candidates for the new Gulf Record position. Um, will be conducting second interviews on the sixteenth. And we should have something to report to the council.
I will ask, you worried if there's anything from library?
There's nothing in the library except for what we talked about is um. With our last meeting, the funds that were coming our way. Did you put the, the library board as well, Shonda?
No, because I mean, it was just two days prior.
Oh, it was, okay, yep, okay. But Kelly's aware of that, yes, okay, yes.
Oh, there was a, Kelly applied for that. Uh, the touchdown interview?
Yes.
The brands were. They were awarded that.
They were awarded the grant, yes. And what was that for?
It's like my first meeting now or saw him.
Yep.
I was just happy about the release of that.
Without cutting Lori off.
Go ahead, yeah.
Max, like, I just wanna make a comment on that overspending, on that overspend fund, so we're gonna get that.
Yep.
The council probably needs to work really close with the library board, but we need to start formulating. A really good plan to utilize that sixty-three, like sixty-three thousand dollars, Lori, is that correct? So that we're utilizing it correctly. The council needs to consider how we're gonna do that and what way we're gonna move forward, whether it's going to, you're gonna. Take a side committee. To start planning that. I would recommend maybe a. A portion of the library board, a portion of the council to start looking on something. Because Hitch County is not gonna release those funds until we have. An excellent plan on how to utilize them, right? And you don't have to get them all at one time. You can get them in two hours, but. Well, the building needs serious improvements, right? You know, the council just is going to approve to increase the lighting next year. But with the amount of improvements we can do, the building as a whole. Go ahead, go ahead. The number is sixty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-three. Well, let's hope it's more than that, Nick.
So, I mean, like. Mike and Todd, like the front ramp needs to really be down.
Both doors and.
And the door.
Yep, both doors need to be changed. The entrances to those doors need to be changed.
The bathrooms.
The bathrooms need improvement. The carpet needs to be ripped out. The lighting needs changing. It needs a paint job.
Okay, so uh.
I mean, and those are just things that I can recognize, and I know Mike has recognized. But I would encourage the council to get a small committee together to start rolling on where you can spend this money.
Or is that something you want to bring to that next meeting?
Yes.
You can set up a committee with a couple of their members, a couple of our members.
Do you have a preference on how many? People you want in this committee? You know, the planning, the planning committee, yeah, I would say two from each side would be beneficial. When we did the. The plans for the liquor store and the public works, we certainly, we have maybe four people plus somebody that was an expert. You know, we had sea rows, which we don't really need to do. But we do need to, you know, have a mix of what they believe needs to be done, what we can do.
She's like, two from the city council and two from the library.
Uh, whether it's council, a mix of council and staff, we're already a little advice.
This will be something that so that we can, if we can get a plan made this winter.
Correct.
Get something going this.
Right, because then we can get estimates and bids. Um, when some of that ends up being labor.
And if they need you to go sit in on this one, you were out.
Sounds good.
Unless you have another volunteer perhaps, but no one's. It doesn't sound like you're gonna have a shortage at all, so.
Way to go, team.
We'll just bring it to them and we'll go from there. Alright, we are gonna move down to uh, item seven, which is.
Misty's been in it neck deep more than I have. I just provided you guys pictures and paper.
Alright, I didn't want that.
So the restroom is done. Um, for the most part, we have, I talked to Mike, he's got a few little things to help us out with that we need to see for the toilet and. Uh, we need a little. We have a pump, yeah, just some little kiddy things, but we do, um. I'm looking for a restroom sign to put on the door or something, so. Um, and then we're on to the next thing and I think you kind of have details on that, but. Little bit, yeah. We're looking to start the pavilion after this now, so we're gonna start looking at funding again and donations and. Anything and everything we can do to scrape up enough money, build a pavilion within this group again. Yeah, we're hoping to this winter yet. Um, Misty's, you know, been able to get material estimates from the lumberyard already on. The plan for the pavilion based on what our group um, envisioned this past summer. Um, we still need some estimates on the labor. Um, the gentleman that did the restroom has agreed to do a labor, to do it again from the pavilion and I thought he did a marvelous job. I think this is so super cute. You know, just the heart that Brian put in it is just echoes the whole, the whole project itself, so. Um, we know how big we want that pavilion. Um, and we're really hoping we can knock that one out of our to-do list and. Be done. So you can have it completely after that project is done. But it should be, um, we envision an open-sided pavilion with enough room to put. Six tables, the tables that the school made for us last summer underneath with our cement pad. And hopefully have enough, you know, little extra room or have some sod in that area, some boulders so that it'll. Make a definition between a parking area and, and the musical space when we're all.
So that you're a little bit there than wayside, right, or what?
Well, that's a size that's not good comparison.
Yeah, that one's.
Twenty-four by twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah.
Six tables, it'll fit.
They're close to the same size as the ones that are in.
Yeah, they can't for anyone's. Yeah. Yeah, we did receive um, another roundup grant this fall from Beltran Electric. Um, that'll help keep that funding going. And we have a private RE that wants to donate to the next phase as well. We need to get our estimates, one step over that. One step closer.
Um, we were talking, um, was that Friday?
Yeah.
We were talking Friday, I don't know, um, wayside. We were talking about sand.
Sand, out of the beach hole up with the, well.
With the wind, you know, the wind blew all the sand up the hill. And they were talking that um, barn or farm sand? They said that on farms, you guys, there's a lot of sand on farms.
Not on my farm. That shit.
But. Like there's, and they said it's like softer, more, a lot better sand.
And beach sand?
Yeah.
Well, maybe Minnesota, we understand, but that's a lot different.
Is this, is this like something super and it doesn't erode? Is that the reason for the conversation? Boy, I don't know. I mean, our winters are in that ice on that lake, it's.
It moves boulders.
Yeah, it.
So.
If it moves rocky, it can move sand.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
And are you obviously every year?
When, when the project was starting, we knew that when the city had this completely in this. This group was done. There was gonna be, there was gonna be beach sand brought in every year. It was just, I mean, unless we do a full retaining wall like Benjamin has and, and I know. It was just, I mean, unless we do a full retaining wall like Benjamin Housen, and I know that they bring in sand and we evaluate that too. That's just never gonna stop. It's gonna come in and.
It'll be interesting. We only had one winter and that one was, it was kind of, it was a little rough start. We were kind of starting to question things, but we went down in the group and we picked all, like, a lot of the roots and rocks. We cleaned it all and shoved it away and and their equipment too, just a little bit of sand. I mean, it really just popped right out of it.
Yeah.
And so it'll be interesting to see one more winter to see what happens, you know, it's almost kind of I gotta wait and see what does. I think it turned out all right, and we were a little worried in the beginning, but I think.
I think it still turned out all right, and I think the public didn't even give it a second thought when they, when they were.
We used it, yeah.
You were dog.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple, like, you know, it dropped down a little bit in some spots, but I just don't think we're ever gonna get it.
I think.
I think you have to start over. We did talk about that.
We did.
We talked about building the wall and then having an opening, and then we started looking at the money towards that, and it was like, uh, we didn't really wanna have to redo the whole entire thing.
I think no matter where you go in Minnesota, where there was a beach, there's always gonna be consequences every year.
Yeah, hopefully it never, I mean, hopefully it doesn't have a winter where it's so wiped out that is a huge burden for you know, I mean, hopefully that doesn't happen, but you just never know.
It usually takes more than a year to do this.
Yeah, exactly. We're winging it. We're just, and if we have to, worst case scenario, it all falls apart and the city's overwhelmed. I mean, maybe it's still that sort of, hammer back together and try and do something again, where we can get funds again, or, you know, I mean. Yeah, there's always a way. Try to rework it again.
The sand issue is like, two hundred and fifty dollar thirty minutes in my time, issue.
Yeah. Excellent. Good attitude.
Yeah.
Anything else, Kristina?
No.
Other than they should get ahold of you if they would like to make a donation.
Absolutely. Yeah, me and Christina really, it's actually kind of come down now, maybe kind of fell apart and everything, um. So it really has come down to Nye and Nate Land. I would say it would be the three standing people really still pushing and trying to put it down. And we're doing it, I'm fully confident, and I don't feel like we need any more help, because sometimes I just slow things down too. So I think we're doing good.
Yep, and that's a whole library committee thing, that's easier to work on sometimes.
Very good. Thank you. Administrators report.
I have a couple of resolutions that need approval tonight, maps. The first one is acknowledging and identifying donations from the Development Corps and the Chamber to help with the website redevelopment. Um, as you may remember from previous work sessions, um, the Development Corps has provided three thousand dollars to the redevelopment of the city website and the chamber, um, donating a thousand dollars. So, because they have requested specific locations for this funding, well, um, this needs to be acknowledged.
Oh, group resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty. Resolution of how you need to. A motion. In a second, there any discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, or none passes.
Um, resolution thirty-one is designating the polling places for two thousand twenty-two for the municipal and other elections that will be.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one.
Motion, go out a second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? I opposed. None passed.
And then, resolution thirty-two maxes, uh, resolution approving the final two thousand twenty-one tax levy flexible two thousand twenty-two based on the given taxation during reports provided earlier tonight.
I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two resolution approving final twenty twenty tax levy flexible in twenty twenty-two.
One second. Motion in a second. Any further, any discussion on? I would request a roll call vote.
All right. Lori? Council Johnson.
Hi.
Uh, hold on, Council Q and.
Hi.
Council sites? What was that?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Goulet?
Aye.
There you go.
Approval, yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one thirty-three is the resolution adopting a schedule of use charges in various licenses um, for the city block for two thousand twenty-two. I know in the work session I said you didn't need to do this until January and. And the reason for that is because I needed to notify all the customers of the upcoming increase, even though it doesn't affect their bill, but students don't mark one because we're always a little behind, but I need to send letters out to everybody after the screening is done, they're notified that that um, followed an increase. So that's noted in this resolution on page. Right, on page two, items thirty-two and thirty-three. Are you making the motion or are you asking for it?
I'm asking for it.
Okay.
Motion to approve revolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Passing.
Kurt, you're up.
I'm just, uh, up to give you a, uh, kind of a quick update. I was here late summer and we all talked about the application uh, for the sales tax. I'll go in the end of January. There's a bunch of months of that, so spent last week again up here defining the project list. Um, talked about grouping some of these projects and larger lists to be presented. Um, we talked a little bit about making regional significant argument in that application, so we talked about different angles of that narrative that. Um, and through our discussions, one of the things that we need to include in that application is the half-cent sales tax and on last time, the assumption is that um, over twenty-year period, that's also an assumption. Um, as part of that assumption, maybe also have to state it, um, and just that you can tell twenty years or until you reach this certain threshold money. So, for example, if we say ten million dollars, you reach that before you get to twenty years, the sales tax, and then the twenty years expires or when you reach that, uh, month. Christina has some information that's a couple of years old on sales tax, um, that shows anticipated revenue, um, around forty thousand.
Using two thousand eighteen's. That was the, that was the earliest the department revenue could provide to me, I asked for it, and that was back in dollars, two thousand twenty, I think I asked for it.
Over the last couple of years, um, some of that has changed in how people purchase things. Online sales have based partly because COVID necessarily gone away completely, and that can drive more sales tax for community. Um, for example, if someone was gonna drive down to Target and buy something and instead now they learned how to do it online over COVID, and now it's just easy for them to order it online through Amazon. Um, not sure how many years it's been though, but now the state captures most sales and they go to the point of sale, so, um. The city actually could collect sales tax associated with online order. But I have a good way of capturing how that's changed. International Falls is a good example, that their market study showed eight hundred and fifty thousand approximately, you anticipate each year for sales tax. Um, their Kmart closed, there was some real concern, was that a realistic number? COVID came, everyone started ordering online instead of driving to the booth, and all of a sudden they're pulling in one point two. So, um, some of that's been a decent period, and people go back to their, their own way, but we're trying to discuss what we want is a number that's realistic, you know, we don't wanna cut ourselves short and all of a sudden expires after sixteen years. Um, so that forty thousand doesn't probably feel realistic, and so we were throwing around using fifty thousand in that cap. So, an increase of over ten percent, but probably justified, it's a few years old, plus buying habits have changed, so, um, fifty thousand, that would be a million dollars over twenty years, so, so, um, that sales tax isn't actually lasting twenty years or encompassing. So, um, but we wanted to run that by you before we do that application, if that's. Ideally, you'd put a huge number on that, so you do, you've never expired out those twenty years, but it's gotta be realistic with that.
Is it kind of turn around and bite you too, people aren't understanding?
You're asking for too much.
Yeah.
So it really feels like it'd be the reasonable number to use, and we have information without meeting at forty thousand a year, so.
Are we looking for a motion on this one to?
Uh, we don't need a formal motion.
You're going to approve the application here and.
Yep.
I got you.
So, but we don't, we wanna, as we put these narratives together, we wanna make sure that everyone's kind of comfortable that are.
Just to clarify, that's not. How do you regulate, and this is foreign to me, so I'm gonna ask some questions, so how do you, like, if I buy something on Amazon? How far away, like, is it Zip code? And how does that work?
I think it's the your zip code. Um, it hasn't been enacted that way that long, there was lawsuits back.
Minnesota is actually pretty recent.
But the, you know, states wanted to start capturing these sales taxes or. So the state wants that money, you're buying something in California. But the city could ride in on their foothails, and they would have a half-cent riding on them.
I would bet that one of your concerns, Misty, is you're not in the city.
Right.
You're in Laker. And that purchases should not affect, should not get that number set.
I would assume they have a way of picking addresses.
I think they're going to have to, I mean, dramatically, because our zip code goes all the way down, scenic, Huntington, and all the way out to, to Squale.
Is that where it is, or is it? I mean.
That's actually, it's gotta be your address.
It's gotta be your addresses, they, they need to know where the, um, where the, yeah, where the benefit, where your address is and how they.
The zip code works for the state or if their, your city, what's happening in other cities, it must already dominate.
And this money that you're getting through the taxes, this one specifically towards.
We're creating a, um, a document that outlines what these projects, what this kind of funding, what these funding will go towards, and when we originally did it in the two thousand eighteen election that, that voted down, it was just for infrastructure and streets. And now they want, um, in order for it to pass at the legislature, you need to show regional significance. So what the city has agreed to is to incorporate other, um, projects that need funding too, things that support our parks and recreation. Our trail, our campground, our golf course, our parks.
So if you did this pass in the city, how would you, as a city, delegate where it goes to then?
Um, when there's projects that are being funded, that's where that money would go to, to give that debt.
That's a little cloudy.
Okay, so let's say we're gonna redo the water and sewer line in Liberty Drive and.
But let's say you had three things going on.
Yep.
Like, so you just pick and choose, like, what?
It would have to go by percentage, and I know there's a statute that delineates how much can go where, depending upon how big that project is.
And that would be at, at the council's discretion?
It, there's some of that, yes, and it would also, it would also and I'm not a hundred percent on this, but I would also gauge that a good portion of it has to be, if this is a water and sewer project, that part of your utility revenues would have to help fund some of that debt too. It wouldn't just be all the sales tax revenue that would fund that debt completely. Does that help?
Yeah.
And the project specifically after.
Right.
So if we forget about a project, who would like to use it on that and end up that application? Can.
So when you write that.
Yes.
I don't know.
Yep. Yep. And that's what we've been working on this last. Yep, when, when it did not pass as a referendum vote in two thousand eighteen, in that year back then, if the voters approved it, then it went to the legislature to approve, but in two thousand nineteen, they changed the way that works that thoroughly where the city still has to pass a resolution, but the legislature gets the vote first, and if they don't pass it, then it doesn't vote the voters. Now, so it's completely the opposite now.
Now it'd be on our voter registration here.
In, in this coming fall, if the, if our state legislators approve it this coming spring. And I just spoke with Matt Russell on Saturday, and he's aware of the project.
So you still write the application if you know it hasn't passed?
Yeah, we have to show, um, what we've done by hiring Woodset is they created a campaign, campaign for International Falls because they were in the same boat, where the voters didn't really understand what this was for, they only saw the debt and the increase of property taxes, because that's basically how you're, as a city, you're getting that debt. And, um, it didn't really pass, it didn't make passing eighteen, because people just saw, oh, you're gonna raise my taxes, well, they're assuming a percentage increase is a property tax increase, not a sales tax increase, so it didn't pass. And what I falls did was they created this nice public campaign that they could give to the voters so that they were aware of what's coming down the pike when the election comes, and that's what we're.
We're helping the city with that. They all, the needs that the city needs to sort of, people are.
Time to help sell it.
Yes. Yep.
We like the city of Virginia, state put a half of sales tax on a few years ago. Back, and it's coming up, I think it's, they're having their meeting tonight, and they used all their money for the city park. And they were talking about it on the radio today, and, uh, one of the calls were just talking about it out there, I think it's coming fruition for me, this, right now, and they have to decide what they can do with the money now. Because the parks are almost all that.
Oh, so they're coming to the end of their project, and now they have to consider what, if they're gonna make it, allow it to continue or not?
Yeah.
So just one more question, so that this, is this something that already passed through each one of the council members that voted already yes to it? Because they could still vote no on their ballots, so necessarily not everybody at this table is already saying yes to it?
Um, no, it's a little different, um, what the council will vote on in January, so that the request of the state can get approved on and considered, has to be to the state by January thirty-fourth. So in the January twenty-two regular council meeting, they will vote to approve a resolution to move forward with this action.
Okay.
And then that action will go to the state legislators to consider approval. At that point, if it gets approved, then it comes back to the voters at that time.
They could prove it here and still vote no.
That's true, that's true. Correct. At which point, let's assume it does pass in November of twenty-two, it wouldn't actually start until second quarter of twenty.
Interesting.
So, yeah, fifty thousand.
So yeah, fifty thousand dollars. I think is realistic. Good chunk of change to help out.
I think that's all I wanted to. That, so, we're gonna continue on finding those narratives and stuff, so, um. Christina says that no one was really excited about having a work session this month. So, um, what we'll probably do is if we get towards the end this month, send out the draft of the. Application, so people can read the narratives and maybe show some insight to something and say, hey, you know, add this to this paragraph or something. Um, so that when we get to the meeting, um, we can move forward, we can still tweak some of that narrative after that meeting.
Yeah, we can, it, I mean, the resolution is already, it's pretty boilerplate for the most part.
We can still make changes kind of through January, but it'd be nice to have it posted up by January.
Have a work session for this?
I don't really think so, if people are willing to take a look at it, if we send it out to our camp. It's not gonna be a huge document review, I mean, you're not gonna wanna look at, okay, I'll calculate the cost of this street and all that, you think that's not important. Um, but read the narratives and if you have any to add, so I'm thinking it'll take you half hour to read through, something like that, so.
Do some light reading for you on Christmas Eve. Yeah. When you want some quiet time?
Yeah.
You've done reading to your kids and send it out. I'm on a Christmas.
Alright. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. You too.
Uh, Max, the rest of what I have underneath is just a series of dates. Um, the next Development Core meeting is this Wednesday here, um, that's December eighth at a lot of. Um, we're having a personnel committee meeting, uh, one o'clock on Thursday afternoon here at City Hall. And next Monday, the thirteenth, at one o'clock, uh, Mike's having a park and trail board meeting. Just to review end of year. Go through maybe next year's hopes and dreams. Um, the next chamber meeting is, is at pond on the fifteenth at noon. It's the reason, one of the reasons we kind of coincide at the ribbon cutting.
Okay.
Figured we have business leaders there too.
So you guys, so chamber meeting at noon and then we're gonna do the.
The, the ribbon cutting at one, yep.
Wanna make sure I.
Yeah. Yep.
Three burgers?
Well, you don't, it, it's not, your attendance is not required, but it's.
They're gonna.
Well.
They've already notified, I think they're bringing late ones, and, you know, I've notified Jennifer Parker. I know they're notifying the Chin here, so, um. Uh, Tom, Tracy Pogue asked if we would do a ribbon cutting outside versus inside, and I said I think it's gonna be weather related. You know, but we'll have some photos and. I don't know, maybe we can convince Melissa to make some free fries that day.
I could probably figure something out.
Do some kitchen food or something, I don't know. Hey, I could try out our new oven, maybe I'll make cookies. Maybe. May, that'd be, um, moving to. The Black Duck Planning Commission's regular scheduled meeting is also. Is also the fifteenth at two o'clock that day, um, December sixteenth. At nine thirty, the Black Duck Ambulance Board and drink hours are having a regular meeting here at City Hall, that's also their truth and taxation that we're hearing. Anybody's interested in attending, um, December twenty-fourth, on Christmas Eve, Black Duck City Hall is closed at noon and in observance of that holiday. That's a Friday, and December thirty-first is New Year's Eve, but. Because New Year's Day is Saturday, it's in house closed on Friday. January tenth is your next regular city council meeting. And then I did meet with, uh, Steve Rose over the phone last week. And his feedback on the bidding date for the Public Works Police Facility. From, uh, Chris Anderson was that waiting. Is actually problematic, is not really good to get it done with, because what most construction companies are. Uh, doing is they are bidding for a leader, because it's taking so much longer to get materials. Um, confirm subs on projects that the construction companies were doing a lot of doing on a lot of projects earlier anyway, so they. They advised that the city stick to that January twentieth bid opening date. So, um, that'll be here at one o'clock, the advertised dates will be, um, December eighteenth and January first. And we'll be putting that in the American as well as the Pioneer, and then we'll also note in the bid language, um, that'll be available on that. Internet-based bidding program that Woodset uses. And that's everything, like, for me, unless anybody has any questions. No? I don't need. Council report.
I was happy to see every single one of you out the park.
No, no.
On Saturday, that was, that was great.
It was fun.
It was good to see.
It locked in.
One, three, four, three.
So.
Finding all the people off the list.
I think it's fantastic for a first time on, I think.
I like Santa in the pavilion.
And the visitor center, that worked good.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take it. No, I think that's all. People are hurting.
Pretty, pretty, yeah, getting in and all that, it is small part two way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see we have a chamber bingo coming up.
Uh, yes, the chambers bingo is this coming Sunday from one to three, uh, pond. And, uh, Kelly West is hosting a craft open house. Um, at the golf course from ten to three that same day too, so, still a lot of stuff going on.
Is that open day, you mean, anybody can?
You. Um, I think if you're going to, uh, have a booth, you need to get in touch with her, Dawn, but it's, it's, um. I think she's calling it open house for anybody to come in and buy and everything, but I don't believe I wanna read into it that you can. Sell your stuff wherever, I think as a vendor, you need to wind up with seven minutes space.
Who is it?
Kelly West, she actually works, um, at the office. Oh, doesn't she have Facebook post for it, you guys, and on it? All, my job? No. Um, if you go past the golf course, she's got a banner, a Pepsi banner up.
Okay.
Alright, alright. Anything else?
I found that Touchstone Award.
Okay.
Oh, so, um. They were awarded five hundred cash, um, it was, they were pulled from, from several other, um, nonprofits. Um, for excellence and worthy, readiness. For the things that they've done for the community, or things that they're doing like the after, the summer, winter program, reading program.
The after school program.
Um, just the different things that they've been doing, so they were recognized for that.
That's nice, so.
Yeah.
Everybody wanna make that motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
We have one in a second, so.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Hi.
That's a hard sell. Then it's over here voting no. It's been a pleasure with all of you, we'll see you next year.
Next year.